Hopefully be in another location, so thank you for putting up with a slightly unusual background and forgive us if we're a little disoriented this evening. Will you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Brea.
Mr. DeWitt?
Present.
Mr. Hayfley?
Present.
Mr. Hall?
Present.
Mr. Lydiak?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Dr. Richard?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Seven members are present.
Thank you. The Board of Education President announcements, there are a couple of comments I'd like to make. The first one is that we had the opportunity to speak with two representatives from the Department of Education this evening during our work session. Alyssa Pearson and Jessica Nevels were present. We were able to kind of get an idea of some of the options the state is considering in terms of district assessments and evaluations. And we, as a board, invited these individuals to come to us because we feel the district has some feedback to give the state as it evaluates us. And in this moment of opportunity, we wanted to communicate some of those ideas with them, and they were very gracious and expressed an interest in hearing our suggestions as a board. Another item that we discussed was our own internal assessment of our students and our dedication to serve our students better every day and to right-size and correctly evaluate our students and finding ways to better reflect their performance. Last year, if some of you recall, I introduced three key words that serve as the district's promise to our students: engage, empower, and inspire. And in our meetings in the future, we'll remain conscious of how our board actions reflect these three key terms. Our mission is to see that District 6 provides every student with a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education in a safe, caring environment. As we take this pledge every day to our students and to our employees, I know that a number of good things will be happening as a result. The next item on the agenda is hearing a person's desiring to speak before the Board of Education. And I have one individual who has expressed an interest to speak, and it is Ms. Pat Otto, President of the GEA, who is going to speak to the board regarding the Star Award. Welcome and thank you.
And I've asked our Star Award winner to come up tonight with me.
Lovely.
So, President DeWitt, Dr. Pilch, members of the board, thank you for allowing me this time. This is Megan Means. She is one of our subs in the district. And as I was thinking over the weekend about today, I'm like, oh, I haven't done this for a while, I thought about Megan. Megan is an outstanding sub in our district for a lot of reasons. She came to us last fall when we had an opening at West in the Ag Department fairly early in the year. She jumped right in. She's been working with Kelly Longacre, putting in a ton of hours after school, learning how to teach Ag. She has a science background already, so melding the two has been pretty easy, just adding more of the agricultural piece to her teaching background knowledge. She stayed with us all through last year as we couldn't find a candidate to fill that spot. When that opening came again this year, Megan applied. She was rehired to stay. So, there's not many of our subs who will stay with us that long, through two school years, working with the kids. She has built a tremendous bond with the children, and so now there's that connection. She has provided that consistency for two years for our students at West in the Ag program. And I wanted to give her the Making a Difference Award because I just think that's a lot to say of one of our subs, to make that commitment to one school, to a group of kids, and a program. That's pretty amazing. We don't find too many of our subs that are willing to do that, and so Megan will be getting my Making a Difference Star Award.
Well, thank you very much. Megan, congratulations. Megan, as a former substitute teacher, I really appreciate what goes on in that aspect of your life, and we do very much thank you for your work. Thanks, Ms. Otto. The next item is the Work Session Report. Ms. Brea?
Board of Education President Roger DeWitt began the work session with an introduction of Colorado Department of Education Representatives Alyssa Pearson, who is the Interim Associate Commissioner, and Jessica Nevels, the Accountability and Policy Principal Consultant, who gave a presentation on district and school performance frameworks. Dr. Pearson discussed the performance indicators and performance data and the accountability timeline and requirements. Board members had time for questions and provided feedback. President DeWitt discussed board members submitting guest columns for the Greeley Tribune, and he reviewed upcoming calendar events. Chief Academic Officer Dr. Stacy Dattery presented the district results for the Colorado Measures of Academic Success Park Data. Superintendent Dr. Deirdre Pilch updated the board regarding the ballot initiative. She stated that Telme Drake has been contracted to conduct polling of community members, which will begin in late January, and a Citizens Advisory Council will be formed this spring. President DeWitt then spoke about the initial process for the superintendent's evaluation, and that concluded the work session.
Thank you very much. Next item is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt, and Happy New Year to all of you. What a great holiday break we had here in District 6, and we've got our students and our staff all back, and we are gearing up for an amazing second semester here in District 6. So, I first want to just share a couple of items with you and then one celebration. We met with the Business Advisory Council on December 21st, right before break. That team of key business leaders in our community met with me and some of our staff. We shared the new mission, vision, values, and goals with them, and they were able to give us insight and feedback on what they would expect us to be doing as a result of that "engage, empower, and inspire" statement. And then we also shared our timeline for looking at the ballot measure and considering the possibility of a future ballot measure, and they were able to give us some feedback on that. So, very productive meeting, and I'm so grateful for those business leaders who gave over a half a day of their personal and professional time to dedicate to District 6. We're really, really honored to have them. So, this is the time of year we begin to gear up for our internships, and you all remember that last summer, we placed over 50 students in paid internships in the summer as a part of our Career Pathways programs at our high schools. So, if there are businesses out there and you are willing to have an intern, whether a paid intern or a shadowing intern, if you will contact Teresa Myers, our Director of Communications, we'd love to take you up on that. We have over 175 students who are juniors who are saying, "I'd like to be in a paid internship this coming summer." So, we're going to be tapping our business community to help us with that. So, we received news here in the last week that, well, we received news right before winter break, and then it hit the media in the last week, that the State Department of Education will be expecting us to move from the ACT exam for our juniors as the statewide assessment to the SAT exam. And, you know, this brings with it lots of concerns and worry for districts throughout the state of Colorado, as the ACT has been the state exam for over a decade here in Colorado. So, you know, we, as superintendents, were able to push back, as well as some of the other professional organizations, and the state board did agree to allow us to go ahead and test our juniors this year with the ACT, but the intent is still to go forward with the SAT. And so, as that progresses, I'll certainly keep you all up to date on what that means for District 6 and for our students here. And then a couple of celebrations. One, Sandy Cosner, principal at Chapala K8's Arts Magnet School, will be recognized later this month in Colorado Springs at the Colorado Music Educators Association as the State Administrator of the Year for Music. This is an outstanding award. When you consider that we have over 180 school districts in the state of Colorado and one administrator, and there, I mean, there's literally thousands of administrators in the state of Colorado, one administrator gets selected to be the Colorado Music Educator Administrator of the Year. I am so proud of Sandy Cosner, and I know you all are too, that she will represent us there. In addition to that, our Greeley Children's Choir will be performing at that breakfast where she's recognized. Again, another huge honor for District 6. And then Chapala's Rebel Trebles Group will be performing the next morning at Colorado Music Education Association. This is huge for District 6, and really a nice honor and such a tribute to the fine arts that are going on in District 6. So, I look forward to hearing more about how that goes, and hopefully we'll get to see a little footage from those performances. And then lastly, you know, I want to recognize Pat Otto, President of our Greeley Education Association, for taking time to identify someone to get her Star Making a Difference Award here at our board meetings. You know, recently, Pat and I and several others did a lot of work to get our contract, you know, closed out and get an agreement. And then I just received news, my Happy New Year's present, the official news, that the lawsuit against District 6 by the Greeley Education Association has officially been withdrawn. And so, that was a great New Year's gift for all of us. And, you know, that kind of work cannot happen without the willingness of the Teachers' Association, as well as the willingness of you all and our administration to work out these issues. And so, I'm excited about that and really proud of Pat for the work she's done with that and her colleagues. We will enter into consensus negotiations later this month, which all of the board and several district administrators and several district teachers will be a part of. So, looking forward to that work. And, you know, hey, that substitute teacher, Megan, that we have going on over there at Greeley West, let's get her licensed. Let's get her a teaching license and get her hired up, right? So, thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you, ma'am, and thanks for sharing some good news all the way around. The next item is the approval of the agenda, and that is an action item. I'd be glad to hear a motion to that effect.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion from a board member? Seeing none. Roll call, Ms. Brea.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
And the motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. The next item is the approval of the consent agenda. It is also an action item. I'd be glad to hear a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve items as presented on the consent agenda and authorize the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, Ms. Brea.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
And the motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is the public notice of meetings and designated posting site. It is an action item. I'd be glad to hear a motion to this effect.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the administration building, West Lobby, and the district website as designated posting sites for public notice of meetings.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Pilch, have you additional information for us, other than that this is a requirement for us to say where we're going to post our information?
You hit the nail on the head. It is required by state law, as well as required by board policy that we do so.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments of board members? Seeing none. Roll call, Ms. Brea.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
And the motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is regarding the district improvement plan. It is an action item. It was earlier discussed. Is there a motion at this time?
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the district improvement plan as presented.
Second. It's been moved and double seconded. Dr. Pilch?
You know, I will just add, Mr. DeWitt, that this is the state's requirement for each district to submit a unified improvement plan for the entire district. And what you'll see in the district's improvement plan is significant emphasis on teaching strategies and measurement and monitoring of our students, who are students who we identify as English language developing students, and appropriately so. That's where the emphasis is. This plan is developed through lots of work led by Dr. Stacy Dattery. She works not only with our DAC to finalize the plan, but she works with our principals who, throughout the fall, bring input and revise and develop this plan, because it is the district's plan, and it's work district-wide that's going on across the district. And this is work that's been ongoing. It's, there is some new work in this plan, but much of the work is ongoing work because it is a multiple-year plan.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. As I said, it's been discussed in an earlier meeting and certainly discussed frequently in other sessions. Further discussion or questions, please, from the board? We take these obligations very seriously, and so we appreciate having this as a general guideline, certainly. Roll call, Ms. Brea.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
And the motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is similar but different. School improvement plans. It's an action item. I'd be glad to hear a motion at this time.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the school improvement plans for the priority improvement schools, which are Centennial, Maplewood, Martinez, Scott, and Shawsheen Elementary Schools, Brentwood, Franklin, Prairie Heights Middle Schools, and Union Colony K6, and the turnaround school, which is Engage Online Academy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Pilch?
So, I would just add, Mr. DeWitt, that what you have in your board packet tonight is the plan for every school in the district. It's actually the board's obligation, as the motion states, to approve those plans that are priority improvement or turnaround improvement. We have a plan for every school, and ideally, that plan supports the district unified improvement plan to ensure that we're moving not only the district-wide data forward, but the individual schools' data forward. You know, our schools take this very, very seriously. As I look at the work that Dr. Dattery and the school directors and the other staff have done with building principals and their staffs in the development of these plans, they take it very seriously and are very dedicated to the improvement of our students. And I've seen, you know, extensive development of staff to ensure that staff are able to do the really sophisticated work they're being asked to do in order to move our students in the right direction in terms of student achievement.
Thank you for that.
If you have questions you want to ask around detail, I can certainly bring staff up for those.
Well, and this is something that is available to people to take a look at what their schools are pledging to do. This runs better than 90 pages, and so this is, as you say, something that we've taken time as a district and as individual board members to really evaluate and ascertain that this is really expressing our goals and our obligations to those students. Other comments, please?
Just to support that, as you read through the different plans, I'm so impressed with the thoughtful organization of why we are where we are, what are our root causes, and then what are we going to do about it? And so, it was great to see that in the context of every school. Each one is unique in what they're doing. Within our packet, there was, within our packet, we had the Salida del Sol Plan as well, and it was placed under the performance level. Can you tell me how that was determined?
Yes. So, the Colorado Department of Ed identifies where the schools are placed, and it is my assumption that they are placed there because they are just in their second year and they don't have the depth of data. Also, remember that the turnaround status and improvement status on schools is on hold this year. And so, this, last year would have been their first year, and there would not have been data for that year for them. So, this is a hold year, which basically says, oh, there's not data for this school. And so, then schools are placed, it's my understanding, they're placed in performance then because of a lack of data.
Okay.
Thank you. It's a starting point. So, the assumption is everybody's in performance until we have the data to indicate that they are or are not. There we go. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Richard. And as a new school, we are obligated and interested to see how they perform and as they line up with data, how they compare with other schools around the district. Thanks for raising that question. That title didn't come from the district itself?
No. Right, no.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? It's been moved and seconded, and we've had a bit of a discussion. Roll call, Ms. Brea.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
And the motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is the American Civil Constructors Incorporated design build of a non-potable water system, or non-potable, I've never known, at Prairie Heights Middle School at the tune of $56,033. This is an action item. I'll accept a motion at this time before we hear an explanation.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the contract with the American Civil Constructors, Inc., for the initial phase of engineering and design of the non-potable water system at Prairie Heights Middle School as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Pilch?
So, this is the final build-out of Prairie Heights Middle School, but it was not anticipated that this cost would fall to us. It had been the intent that this cost would fall, actually, to the developer. And since, really, almost a year ago, last, so last February, Mr. Eads began working on this, and the city of Evans just felt like it was important that we provide this and that we provide this on our property and that we not wait for the developer to do so. So, as a result, the significant cost of this will fall to District 6 out of our capital improvement budget. This is not part of the overall cost, you know, of that $28, $29 million building that Prairie Heights Middle School provides for us. This is out of district general fund dollars and not to exceed upwards of $500,000. So, once it's, they have promised us that this is the design work you're actually approving right now and an agreement to allow them to build, and they're not to exceed the $500,000, but additional contracts will be coming forward to you as that work begins. We just were not able to come to agreement on a workaround that would allow District 6 not to incur this additional cost, which is really unfortunate, because we were hopeful that we would be able to wait and have the developer do this, but the city of Evans really felt like we needed to go forward with it. So, we were glad that it looks like it's going to come in $100,000-plus dollars, less than what we initially anticipated when the engineers first started looking at it. And I've got Brad Johnson here, our director, executive director of operations, who can talk about the finer points of this if there's additional information you'd like.
I know there are a couple of comments and questions.
Do we have an updated AFE, total AFE amount?
Thank you. Brad?
Thanks, Brad.
There we go. I just asked him this question.
Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen, board, good evening. Questions? Right now, we're looking at the development cost, which we're getting approved at this time right now. And in our conversations with them, knowing how many gallons, 650 gallons, minute we need for eight hours a day, and how much square footage that we're trying to cover and everything, they felt that the $500,000 that we had put aside for this project would be sufficient to cover it, and that is building a pond. When we found out about this, we'd already dropped some culverts and stuff underneath the road, and that's about the time we found out about it, is when we were laying the pavement for the road. So, we didn't expect this coming. We thought we'd be able to piggyback, and instead of redundant costs for development on non-potable water, we'd be able to just piggyback with the developer. Developer never got an agreement with the city of Evans, and Evans said, and actually, in December 3rd, "Don't wait. Do it on your own."
Was one other question. Is this the half a million that we're talking about, was that reserved out of the bond-issued money floated for Prairie Heights, or is this an operating budget cost?
No, it is not part of that original budget. This is part of our operational cost. What this means is maintenance will continue to be deferred in the district. This $500,000 would have gone to roofs, HVAC repair, you know, other needs in the district around capital, you know, capital needs, and now those things will not occur.
That is correct. It is capital.
Was there any specific reason that they said we needed to go ahead and do it rather than wait and combine efforts with?
Yes. Fred Starr, the facilities director for the city of Evans, told me that they had not reached an agreement with the land developer and that they did not want us using potable water. They did not want us using treated water. So, spring of 2016, they wanted us on our own non-potable system.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Brad. Dr. Richard?
Just a question about the timeline. So, tonight, we're clearing $56,000 for the research and design piece, and so there's another $450,000 coming up. So, now I'm hearing timeline-wise, this is going to need to come out of this year's budget?
Correct.
So, we don't, it doesn't fall into the next fiscal year or?
We haven't reserved.
Yeah.
We put, we haven't reserved. Mr. Eads foreseen it possibly coming, and it asked us to put it to the side. So, the money has already been reserved.
Okay.
In the capital projects, budget, yes.
We saw this back early, really in August. We began this conversation with the city of Evans, hoping, you know, they began last winter saying, "We're going to want you to do this." And so, we've been engaged with them for multiple months, hoping to not have to do this, but knowing that we might have to, and so we helped reserve those dollars in the event that this is the direction we had to go.
Any idea about when construction could start and finish? I mean, any idea? I know it's all weather dependent and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. No, not at this time. Not at this time. I just preliminary meetings with them. We asked about the due date, and they felt it was achievable. And the date we gave them was May 1st.
Okay.
To have it done up and operational by May 1st, so, weather permitting, yeah.
Are they going to let us use potable water to support the field in the meantime up till May 1st?
Yes. There's always the shoulder watering season, early spring, late fall, when the irrigation ditch isn't running. At that time, we will have to be on potable water. That's expected.
Other comments or questions from board members? We had a great deal of, in my perspective, water shares on that property. Am I wrong on that? And is it too long a story to explain what happened with those?
In short, we gave them probably a lot more water than what we needed to, and in two years, we'll be looking at the meters, and I'm sure we'll be getting some water shares back.
All right. So, there may be a return to some degree on, yeah, that's brief, but I knew there was a story that we could possibly look at a realization of some return on that because of the?
We have plenty of water shares.
The assumption was we'd be using so much more water than our probability is, that this will be something we can talk with them a little bit more about in a couple of years.
Oh, yes, yes. The city's been very open and very friendly about that.
So, we have a?
We'll readdress it in two years after we're on the meter.
So, that door isn't closed?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure under the circumstances. I wanted to make sure I heard the result there. So, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call, Ms. Brea.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
And the motion carries seven zero.
Well, we want to thank all of our staff for making it possible for us to operate in this room at this time under these circumstances, and we look forward to working in a newly refurbished board room with the city of Greeley. It will be their new home for city council meetings, alternating with your school board meetings, and so we look forward to that. We do thank everyone who was involved in making this possible tonight. It was a lot of extra work. And that concludes this meeting. We are adjourned.